Here.
Weigel.
He is excused.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Nine present, one excused.
The quorum is present. Please rise if you are able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Vitale.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free and open government, where we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item D on our agendas, we have three public hearings this evening. I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of the general area bounded by the east city limits to South 60A Street and West Burnham Street to South City Limits by miscellaneous sidewalk repair.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, this is the public hearing for the sidewalk repair program. This is the area that we're talking about from Burnham to the South City Limits and the East City Limits to 60A Street. That is roughly one-tenth of the city. We try to do one-tenth of the city every year. These are the types of flaws that were defects we're looking for: cracks, settled slabs, heaved slabs, displaced slabs. This is the process for replacing the walk. We'll remove it. The old slabs will be removed, and then we'll form it with those forms that you see there. And then they will pour it, and they will finish it. And the next day, or within the next three days, they will come and clean up and backfill along here. And then within 10 days, they would come back and they would put the sod in along either side. So if all goes well, if the weather cooperates, they shouldn't be in front of your house more than 10 days. Why do we do it? Broken, raised, settled sidewalk slabs do create a hazard for pedestrians and other sidewalk users. Property owners actually benefit as well because the sidewalks are easier to shovel and they're easier to keep free of ice as required by the city ordinance. And the city would also avoid any costly lawsuits due to injuries resulting from trippers or defective sidewalks. We did look at 2,000 properties in the area I showed you, and we found about 455 properties that needed some repairs. So the total cost of this is going to be about $140,000. And I don't think we've done this area for at least 20 years, so there's probably quite a few pieces of sidewalk that need to be fixed in that area. I just wanted to point out that the bills would not be mailed out until March of 2022, not '21, but '22, so that's a year from now. And if you do sign up for the installment plan, your first installment wouldn't be until December 2022. So that's 21 months from now, almost two years from now. We do have three payment options. You can pay it all off in a lump sum. And if it's under $100 bills, if it's under $100, we would require that. If it's between $100 and $250, you could opt for the five-year plan. And if it's over $250, you could opt for the 10-year plan. So if you had a $250 bill, for instance, over a 10-year period, assuming 4% interest, the first year's payment would be $35, and the 10th year payment would be $26. That would be for the whole year. So it's like $2 a month. The reason we do charge interest is because we're actually borrowing the money for this project, and we do have to pay the municipal bondholders over 10 years. So the city is merely passing along these interest charges to the residents that choose the five- or 10-year plan. The city does not make a profit off of that interest. Why do we special assess? Well, for over 110 years, the city has been historically charging special assessments, even up to 100% of the cost in the past, for a new street or sidewalk or alley because the homeowner enjoys a unique benefit in having that improvement in front of their house. So that's something that no one else in the city has. It's unique to your property. So that is the basis in the state law for this special assessment. On this project, the city's going to collect $70,000 in special assessments, so that's 50% of the total cost. The assessment rate is $3.39 per square foot, and that's the same for anybody in the city. Everyone's treated the same. Doesn't matter how high the bid prices actually are. That is what everyone's going to pay, is $3.39 per square foot. So everyone's treated equally. Like I said, there has been a state law for over 110 years in Wisconsin that allows special assessments. There have been over 100 court cases that have challenged it, and the judges have all upheld this law as a fair and reasonable method to recoup the cost. So it's certainly been around for a long time. Another reason we special assess is because it's the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, railroads pay their fair share too. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though there are 430 properties in the city that do not pay any taxes. And that's all the colored properties that you see here. They actually encompass about 28% of the total land area of the city, so it's a very large amount of area. And the only contribution they make to the city is through these special assessments. So that's one reason that we special assess as well. And I'd point out that the businesses, corporations, and manufacturers actually pay a higher rate. So they're paying $4.24 to $5.08 per square foot, so that they're paying their fair share as well. So the best way to keep up on when they're coming to your neighborhood is to go to our website and sign up for the Construction in Progress Report. It's about the 10th one down. And we will send out weekly emails that give the status and the location and summary of what's happening, and road closures, and contact information. If you need to talk to somebody, talk to somebody. So I would highly recommend that you sign up for that. We don't have your email address unless you give it to us, so you need to go to the website and sign up for that. So with that, that's all I have for this project.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from the members of the common council?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Roat.
Deep, 25 square feet per square?
25, yes, yes. It's five by five. Is that what you mean? Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none. Are there any members of the audience with questions? If you do have questions or comments, please approach the podium.
Questions?
Okay. I need you to come up to our podium. You get to public speak, sorry. We need to be able to hear you on our... Do we have a handheld?
I own the property at 2201 South 67th Place. It's the corner lot. And seven years ago, I contacted the city that the sidewalks were broken. Heard nothing from them. Kept calling and kept calling, kept calling. Going into the second year, they finally decided to come out and do something. Well, if you call that a job that they did, I don't understand who knows how to lay down blacktop. But over the cracked sidewalks and busted, they just slapped tar all over the place. Didn't fill in the whole block, just worked spots. And I don't see, after putting up with this for seven years, and the tenants' snowblower replacing the paddles on it twice, I don't feel this is fair. I had to wait for you people to come up with this for seven years. No answer?
We only do a neighborhood once every 10 years, so that's why we don't want to be...
Well, I have pictures of the sidewalks, if you'd like to see it, how we lived for seven years the way it is right now.
And I guess my answer to that would be, I wish you would have contacted either your elder persons or myself at the time. I don't know if you contacted me or not, to be honest, if it was seven years ago. But we do get calls about sidewalks. They do go out and try to either shave them down or make them less of a trip hazard or not a trip hazard. And obviously, that wasn't done appropriately in this case, but I...
And I called after they slapped the tar down and said, "You didn't fix the whole sidewalk that was all chipped up and busted." I got no answer, no response from them.
And you were calling down to Public Works?
Pardon me?
You were calling down to the Public Works Department?
And like I said, I do have pictures. You can take a look at them if you like.
We can look during recess if you're still here.
No time to...
Hard to say. It depends on how many people want to speak on certain topics. Or if you want, we could call one of your aldermen or call myself, and we can arrange to get them.
Okay.
Thanks. Anybody else have questions or comments on public hearing number one?
I guess I just have a question too about the timing.
I'm sorry, can you give us your name and address too, please, just so we have it?
Actually, I'm representing my fiancee who was murdered two years ago. I'm taking care of the property for him. It's a rental property. I've had a lot of hardships since he was murdered. And I guess I'm really not understanding the timing of this, if this is a good decision. I mean, I realize they haven't been done for 20 years or whatever it is, but why now, in the middle of a pandemic, when people are struggling to begin with? Even if it happens in 2022, it's still, a lot of people have been set back. So the timing of this, is this really necessary? And looking at the sidewalks on this property, they're not that bad, to charge, you know, well, a minimum of $434 for not that big a sections. And again, to have no say, you know, you can go out and get bids, I get that, you know, and you want to get the best price, you know, through the best contractor. But again, I'm paying taxes to the city of West Alice. I pay my taxes every year. I lived in the city of Milwaukee before I met my fiancee. Never. They fixed the sidewalks, and I realize every municipality is different. But why, you know, all of a sudden sidewalks? That is public property. I mean, you're worried about the liability of that, but then on top of taxes, now you're charging the property owners that too. And like I said, the timing, I just, I don't understand why this is like necessary right now and for these kind of dollars, you know, and not to have any input into, okay, you know. That's a high rate, you know, and you guys are making the decisions, but I'm paying the bill. So I guess I kind of have a problem with that.
And I would ask Mr. Daniels if he could remind... I don't remember what the date was when the bills would be sent out.
Bills will be sent out a year from now, but you wouldn't, if you go on the payment plan, you wouldn't have to pay for 21 months, so it'll be almost two years. So...
Yeah, paying interest on top of that.
Or you can pay it off without interest, if you like.
And I think too, it might be worth mentioning that, you know, we look at every street and every sidewalk, and we do have a capital improvements committee that assesses the priority of how bad a street is or how bad a sidewalk is, and they set out a one-year plan, a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, and they, you know, they try to look ahead down the road to see how much... So this was probably planned out a while.
Well, this is part of our 10-year plan where we do the whole city.
Yeah.
That's why we didn't come to the other property either, because we don't want to go all over the city every year, so we limit it to that neighborhood. And then the next year, we move to the next neighborhood. So it could take 10 years to get to a neighborhood. So that's...
And I realize that this doesn't, it's not an overnight decision, but at the same point too, just the times that we're in right now, maybe just like backing off a little bit and giving people some time to recover and recuperate from this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on public hearing number one? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number one. And I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution relative to determination of an application for a special use permit for Wingstop, a proposed restaurant to be located at 10244 West National Avenue.
Mr. Scher, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. The Wingstop is proposing to locate within a shopping center at 102nd and National Avenue. Many may recognize the center as the shopping center next to Target and with the Piggly Wiggly grocery store. So on the map here, it's on the east side of the shopping center in this wing of multi-tenant commercial spaces over here. The Wingstop will occupy about 1,300, actually, just a little bit over 1,000 square feet of retail space. And it is Zoned C4 Regional Commercial, which does permit restaurants as a special use. It's a former site of the GNC Supplement Store. The Wingstop, if you don't know, they sell chicken wings and french fries and other foods, similar foods. The primary mode of operation for this store will be retail, you know, just carryout orders. There is a small space for seating for about eight persons within the building, a staff of about five people. This is the internal floor plan. Most of the building, about 80% of it, is going to be for the food preparation portion of the business, as well as some storage. Then there's also the retail portion, which is here, the eight seats, two tables, four per table. So we're really primarily focusing on that carryout business. And then in terms of the special use, with every special use, the planning commission does evaluate the overall site, the overall site plan. So in terms of this property, it is, you know, the overall building covers roughly about 76,000 square feet. And then the rest of the site includes parking lot, and then behind the building, there's loading docks and so on. But Planning Commission focused quite a bit on the entrance here off of National Avenue. And there are some site improvements, which I'll go into next, just to sort of show some of the phased improvements that will be happening by the property owner of the site, which isn't Wingstop. I mean, the property owner of the site, the landlord, is going to be making these changes over the next two years. So initially, in the first phase, which will be completed this summer, we'll be adding some speed bumps, which are highlighted here. And the reason for that is that with a lot of the traffic that's coming in or out of onto National Avenue, sometimes that traffic is coming in fairly fast. And it's really somewhat uncontrolled at this point, where there's a lot of, you know, incoming traffic, outgoing traffic, all in one spot. It's a very busy area. And then once you're into the parking lot, you have decisions where you can go straight, you know, towards along the storefront promenade, or, you know, you can make a hard left and then travel this way over to the bank and Target. So it was, the Planning Commission's push to really try to slow down the traffic within the shopping center, especially at this southern access point off of National Avenue. So the speed bumps will be installed as part of Phase One. There's also some bike racks that are going to be added, as well as some benches within the center that are highlighted here in blue and red. And then there's also some ADA accessible access that's going to be relocated. The existing ADA stall is located here at the south end cap, and that's going to be relocated further north, moved further away from this driveway here along National Avenue, moved further north. And then there's also going to be a crosswalk access that will cut through this island from the ADA parking stall to the storefront promenade, which wraps around the storefronts here. So that's year one. And then year two, some additional pedestrian improvements are going to be made, as well as some landscaping improvements to the site. That will include a new ramp that will be installed here to connect to the sidewalk, the public sidewalk along National Avenue. This will be an ADA accessible ramp, which will roll down to the site and then connect to the sidewalk promenade along the storefronts. And then there'll be some additional landscaping islands installed as well. One here at the entrance, within the driveway entrance, and then another two at the south end caps of existing parking rows. So these are, you know, incremental changes over the next two years that Planning Commission had recommended as a condition of the special use. The owner is in agreement with these changes, and Planning Commission has recommended approval at the March meeting, and then there have been no objections to date. So happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions from the council?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Grisham?
Steve, I have a question for you. I actually tuned in to the Plan Commission meeting on this, and I had heard the distress from the owner of the building, so I really wanted to hear the follow-up as far as those changes being made to the entrance to the parking lot. Anyone who's frequented that area knows that it's...
Yeah.
It's very dangerous.
Right.
I didn't notice, though, did anybody mention about actually relocating that entrance and revamping the structure of that parking lot? Because that would make sense and maybe mitigate the costs that the owner has to bear in this, because as they had stated, you know, it's a smaller restaurant, and they weren't prepared, you know, for as many updates as they would have to make. But that's not here nor there. But I just wanted to know, was that discussed at some point?
We didn't talk about relocating the driveway. However, we did talk about maybe reorientating the parking lot configuration itself, perhaps by, you know, reorientating these parking stalls from an angular pattern to a 90 degree pattern. Now, you may lose some parking in the process of that, but you may also gain potentially by straightening the parking stalls out. As it turns out, there were some larger issues that prevented that from taking place in terms of grades, stormwater runoff, existing catch basin locations. By doing that, it would have a larger effect of making, sort of compounding the cost of doing that. So it felt proportionally, it might not be the right time to make such a change. Certainly, if a larger project came, you know, came into the center, another tenant, or, you know, a larger tenant, or maybe some significant change proposed by the owner, you know, at that time, that would be a great launchpad to have that, you know, discussion about how to, you know, bring in exactly, you know, what you're talking about, to maybe reconfigure the overall parking lot, change the grades, and so on. But...
Yeah, and just to kind of piggyback on that, I mean, safety was the biggest topic in that meeting. And when you're looking at where the handicap parking is going to be, that's quite a walk, even, and it still would be a dangerous walk...
Yeah.
...to walk across where that entrance is. I just wanted to know if it was discussed, so maybe in the future, as you said, that can be looked at.
Yeah, yeah. It is, it's definitely an area of some conflict and some concern. And yeah, you're spot on. You know, the Planning Commission was also, you know, very concerned about this particular area and the congestion and conflict that's happening there. So... But these measures are, I think, a step in the right direction. And while maybe not solve everything, they are going to hopefully slow traffic down, as well as maybe move some of the, you know, some of the pedestrian traffic, separate the pedestrian traffic somewhat away from that busier driveway and make it safer to cross, you know, navigate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the common council?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Ranky.
I know that staff worked very hard to get the owners of this property to do these things that was required by the commission. My concern basically, and I think I can speak on Alderman Haas's concerns as well, we have somewhat of a problem on Highway 100. And we are very interested in the businesses that move in this corridor and the time that they are in operation. And our problem usually arises late in the evening with Highway 100 cruisers out. And basically, that's the reason for my concern and also Alderman Haas's concern. They will be asking for the hours of 11 to 12 at night. Now, I did find out that there are several businesses, food businesses, that basically are open only until 10 o'clock. I think, what do we have? Arby's, Boston Market, and McDonald's is open till 11, as well as Oscars. And I'm wondering possibly if we could ask them to close somewhat a little earlier to coincide with what the other restaurants have indicated for their hours of operation. Was there a reason why they were open until 12 at night? All the, I mean, Target is closed at 10. Piggly Wiggly is closed at 10. They would be the only business in that particular little mall open till 12.
Could certainly broach that topic with Wingstop to see if they'd amendable to, you know, revising their hours. I don't have an answer as to why they're open till midnight other than, you know, it's potentially more, you know, cash flow or, you know, customers. But we could certainly have that conversation with them.
I wouldn't want them congregating in the parking lot that is currently located there.
Right. I mean, it is, I mean, it's intended, the Wingstop business is intended to be, you know, quick turnover, where you place an order online or over the phone, and you come in and pick up your order and you leave.
A lot of them are, but the cruisers still locate there.
Sure. I mean, that could happen now, I guess, you know, regardless of Wingstop. But, you know, I could certainly discuss the hours with Wingstop.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Are there any other questions from the common council on public hearing number two? Okay, hearing none. Are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number two? Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing, and we will move on to item three on our agendas. I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
Resolution relative to determination of an application for a special use permit for Wrestling Taco, a proposed restaurant to be located at 1606 South 84th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a Mexican-themed restaurant that wants to locate at 1606 84th Street. The former location of a pizzeria was at that location. Unfortunately, they didn't make it, but the Wrestling Taco is poised for success at the same location. They're making some interior modifications to the building. The site is currently landscaped in accordance with the approved plan from the prior use. There's some fun graphics here. But it is a Mexican-style restaurant. It does have a bar for about eight seats within the building. They'll have appetizers, tacos, burritos, and the like. They have applied for a liquor license. 80% dine-in, with some carryout, but primarily dine-in is the expectation or what they hope to achieve here. And they have, they're looking to hire just under 10 employees with, you know, I guess the project estimated cost is about $5,000. It's low, but I mean, when you figure there was a restaurant here prior, there was maybe not as intensive of a makeover as otherwise typical. The hours indicated here, Monday to Friday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m., with Saturday hours a little bit later, from 8 a.m. to 1 a.m., and Sunday, 8 to 10 p.m. They do have a drive-through. The building or the space is about 3,100 square feet. They are proposing a drive-through. The two graphics here, the different colors, the green shade is for a small party room that they're proposing, and then the bar area, the eight-seat bar area is shown in blue. And this, the overall site plan here shows the extent of the overall strip mall with at the very north end, near Lapham Street on the left side. That is the proposed Wrestling Taco location. The queuing here that you see here with the three cars, that's the drive-up window. It really isn't intended to be like a fast, the typical fast-food approach to drive-through. It's more of like you place your order, and they tell you to, you know, be here in 15 minutes, and then coordinate your approach that way and show up on time. So that's the intent. So we don't expect a long line of queue or cars like a Chick-fil-A or McDonald's. This is going to be much more tailored to your appointment, kind of an appointment-only pickup window. The rest of the parking lot really isn't changing. There were some changes made with the more recent Pizza Authority use that was in here prior with additional landscape islands and, you know, ADA stalls and bike racks and so on. So that part isn't really part of this plan. There are a total of 76 parking stalls required for the overall property. There's 118 proposed on-site. There are some minor cleanup things on the site with, you know, reattaching some wheel stops that have broken loose over the winter. And then there was a large RV that's parked on the southeast corner of the site, which probably just being stored there, maybe with an arrangement with the owner, but that'll be removed as part of the overall plan here. Planning Commission has recommended approval, no objections to date. And any questions, happy to help.
Thank you. Any questions from the common council on public hearing number three? Alderman Stefanski?
The drive-through window that you're talking about in the back...
Yeah.
Are they going to access that from down by the 84th Classic Cafe?
They would, they would. I mean, well, there is, I guess, depending on the turning radius of your vehicle, you could come in here and make the roundabout... you could come in here and make the roundabout turn, you know, to come back. Or the other options are, yeah, you could, there are other access points along eighty-four Street, you know, here, and then here, where you could come in and then come around to pick up.
I'm just concerned about that end with it being very busy with, you know, what, we used to have a lot of traffic there for Johnny V's.
Yeah.
And now eighty-fourth Classic Cafe seems to be having a lot of business going in there. I'm worried about that becoming a constant for there. Could we do something on the other end and, like, map out a, a drive-through lane down there for them?
Sure. I mean, that'd be something that we could, you know, just work with them on, maybe more, a more defined access, maybe some, you know, you know, these stalls here are, you know, sometimes used by mainly employees and so on, but we could perhaps organize, there is definitely a surplus of parking here, where we could perhaps organize something where we, you know, maybe not show some of these parking stalls, maybe stripe something off to show a radius turn, you know, off of, off of Lapham Street. We could work with them on that, sure.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grisham.
Nope, Keeney.
Keen, sorry.
That was Keen. I just wanted, based on what Alderman Stefanski said, that window was, I don't know if you remember when it was a bank, I used to bank there, the traffic wasn't ever too bad, and if it's gonna, I personally feel like a pickup window, and you're not having to order and wait, that it really shouldn't be too, too much of an issue with, you know, Johnny V's or eighty-fourth Street Classic Cafe being there. So, I just kind of wanted to add that as a little notation, because I used to bank there. It's never too bad.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keen.
I could be keen now.
I mean, Grisham.
Exactly, I get to be keen.
I just want to echo that, actually, and Alderman Stefanski, I frequent that strip mall quite a bit to get my nails done, and was a patron of Johnny V's. That's a one-way traffic going, also. I think it would be very difficult to, now that they changed that, there's no entrance off of Lapham there, that's closed off, if I'm correct on that, Steve?
Oh, yeah.
Or is there one far opening?
There's one, there's one here now, but, yeah, you're right, this one was closed off.
But the access right off of eighty-fourth there, it would be a one-way lane heading south. And I think that would be awfully difficult to change that up, considering there's other businesses in the, in the strip mall, such as the nail shop and whatnot, taking away parking for them. So, I clearly think that if they entered off at eighty-fourth on that far south side, there is plenty of width between those parking stalls, and they're very rarely full, even when Johnny V's was there. So, I just wanted to add my two cents on it. I think, I think that would be doable, and as Alderwoman Keen said, I don't think the traffic would be that heavy. But who's to say? I think you're going to be very successful with this business. So, my two cents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Alderman Roat.
Steve, my interpretation is, there's not going to be a kiosk window where you roll down your window and place your order and then wait. It's just come up to that window and place your order, or call ahead, correct?
It'll be, it won't be ordered from that window. I think it's going to be more or less, you, you place your order online or over the phone, and then they say, well, be here in fifteen minutes, and you pick up your order, give them your name, and they give you the order, you know, through the window. It's not going to be, there's not another, there's not another point of, you know, a speaker or anything like that where you're speaking, you know, it's just, it's, it's an existing window that's over there right now in the Pizza Authority. It's just something to hand food out the window when it's ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Are there any questions from the members of the audience?
Okay, seeing none. We will close public hearing number three, and we will move on to item E, which is public comment. The common council can receive information from members of the public during this thirty-minute period. Each speaker must announce their name and address, sign in at the podium, and limit their comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. The council can't take action on topics raised by the speakers, and cannot discuss topics with the speakers while they're talking. Does anybody wish to address the council under public comment this evening? If you do, please come up to the podium.
My name is Bridgette Morowitz. I live at one one two zero eight West National Avenue. I am one hundred percent against the proposed face mask ordinance. There is no reason to continue moving forward with this type of restriction. People are getting vaccinated daily, and there must be a point when enough is enough. If the goal is to make people get the vaccination, I would believe that imposing this ordinance would have the absolute opposite effect. Why get the vaccine if my reward is nothing is going to change? I still have to wear a mask, six feet distancing, et cetera. Additionally, any fee associated with this sounds akin to blackmail and extortion on behalf of a city attempting to force their citizens and businesses who are already suffering to the city's way of thinking versus allowing citizens and businesses to be treated as adults. And even in reference to the ordinance that is in consideration, there's one part where it says the city intends to gain voluntary compliance, but recognizes that penalties are necessary to ensure such a compliance. That sounds not voluntary to me at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public comment?
Good evening, council members, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Joshua Keen. I live at one 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 three West Ohio Avenue. I'm here to speak about the mask mandate as well. On February third, twenty twenty-one, was the last time, new cases in West Ellis were over a hundred. Current cases were sixty-three as of three thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Prior weeks before, two seventeen, twenty twenty-one, were forty or under. Twelve thirty-one through one six of twenty twenty-one, West Ellis trended over two hundred cases. Currently, we do not have a crisis. Four twenty-six, twenty-one, a New Jersey couple and two children, including a two-year-old and a seven-year-old special needs child, were removed from a flight from Orlando, Florida, back to New Jersey because the two-year-old did not have a child or face mask on. Spirit Airlines claimed, "The day you turn two, you're over two." Yet Delta Airlines has modified their policy to say that children under two, or who are two, are not able to, are not able to maintain wearing a mask, are exempt. Multiple policies have been derived from the same law. On February fourth, twenty twenty-one, I flew from Reno International Airport. I was pulled out of the, when flying on the plane, I flew in first class, and we were getting ready to land, and I pulled my mask down and took a sip out of my drink. I was finishing the drink. I took two quick sips. The flight attendant told me I cannot do that, that that's not allowed. I asked her, I said, "Ma'am, I'm trying to finish this drink, and I have a hard time breathing." She said, "I don't care. You can take one sip, you have to replace your mask and then swallow." I pulled down, and I showed her, "Ma'am, I just had back-to-back cardiac surgeries." I said, "I have a hard time breathing." And with a mask on, I had an even harder time breathing. I was removed from the flight by TSA at Reno International the morning we landed, and I was interrogated by TSA. I thought it was done and over with. When I went to go up and try and book for my flight the next morning, I was not allowed to book for my flight. In fact, I was put on a do-not-fly list because I refused to comply with the mask mandate. I had to go too early to check the ticketing counter, and I was told that I needed to talk to a TSA official, and promised that I would not break the mask mandate. The problem is that on March third, I received a letter from TSA stating that I got a warning notice that I violated a, I'm sorry, a security directive, fifteen forty-four twenty-one dash oh-two, and that I was subject to a thirteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollar fine. I went, I filed a Freedom of Information Act request on this warning notice. It was notated in that request that I stated thirteen times that I had a disability. Thirteen times that I had a disability. If you pull up the security directive from the Department of Homeland Security and TSA, under section F of that, it states, "This security directive exempts the following categories of persons from wearing a mask: children under the age of two, people with disabilities who cannot wear a mask or cannot safely wear a mask because of the disability as defined by the Americans with Disability Act." So TSA put me on a non-compliance list. I am now on a non-compliance list, and I now, if I am ever caught again not complying, will be subject to a thirteen thousand dollar fine. This will obviously result in myself taking a legal challenge. So I asked the city of, you council members, to take into consideration when taking, making a mask mandate, the city has certain immunities when coming to these things, but businesses don't. And this is where we're at right now. I'm going to have to go after United Airlines on this. Okay, I can't go, can't really go after Homeland Security, but my rights were infringed. I clearly have a problem speaking. Speaking at my grandmother's funeral with a mask on, I was breathing back and forth, but that was what my church required. Taking a sip of the water I was drinking, I couldn't breathe. And nobody seemed to care. In fact, I was escorted off the plane, even though I said to the flight attendant that I couldn't breathe. And finally, in conclusion, it is stated that, and when making these things, this is from ADA Southwest, that the ADA itself, Title III, does not overrule a mask mandate from a city or a state. It does not overrule it. The ADA trumps all. So I ask all of you, do you know what a public accommodation is? Do you know what Title III of the ADA requires businesses to comply with? If not, we better train all these businesses, because they're going to be the ones liable for what you pass as a mask mandate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council under public comment this evening?
My name is Christine Henzig. I live at eighty-four fifty-three West Mitchell Street. And tonight, I'll explain why masks have no impact on virus transmission, and why residents should, and the council should oppose the mask requirement. My comments will cover what manufacturers say about masks, what research says about masks, and what real data from states and countries say about masks. First, the manufacturers say masks and respirators filter particles point three zero to point eight zero microns in size. Virus particles are much smaller, less than point one two five microns in size. So by definition, masks don't work. A disclaimer on a typical box of disposable masks declares that the product, quote, "will not provide any protections against COVID nineteen." Next, for research, what does it say? A study in the New England Journal of Medicine on May twenty-first, twenty twenty concluded, quote, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little if any protection from infection. Public health authorities define a significant exposure to COVID nineteen as face-to-face contact within six feet with a patient with symptomatic COVID nineteen that is sustained for at least a few minutes, and some say more than ten minutes or even thirty minutes. The chance of catching COVID nineteen from a passing interaction in a public space is therefore minimal. In many cases, the desire for widespread masking is a reflexive reaction to anxiety." A study, end quote. A study concluded in May twenty twenty was done with the CDC and prepared for the World Health Organization, the WHO. It admitted, quote, "We did not find evidence that surgical-type face masks are effective in reducing laboratory-confirmed virus transmission, either when worn by infected persons, that is source control, or by persons in the general community to reduce their susceptibility," end quote. In other words, surgical-type masks don't work regardless of who has them on. The CDC's methodology involved searching four different databases, Medline, PubMed, mBase, and Central, and reviewed every randomized controlled trial regarding mask-wearing from every country in the world. The CDC admitted it found, quote, "No reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks." Similarly, the World Health Organization concluded their, quote, "Is no evidence that wearing a mask by healthy persons in a community setting can prevent infection with respiratory viruses, including COVID nineteen." And thus, it said, quote, "Universal community masking is ineffective at preventing infection from respiratory viruses, including COVID nineteen." The WHO went so far as to recommend against wearing medical masks as they, quote, "May create a false sense of security against COVID nineteen." The WHO even took pains to reiterate there is, quote, "No evidence available on a mask's usefulness to protect non-sick persons." Dr. Anthony Fauci himself could have predicted these findings on Sixty Minutes on March eighth, twenty twenty, when he said, quote, "Right now in the United States, people should not be walking around with masks. There's no reason to be walking around with a mask. When you're in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better, and it might even block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think it is, that it is. And often, there are unintended consequences. People keep fiddling with the mask, and they keep touching their face," end quote. In August, the CDC published guidelines based on its research for the WHO that stated that someone who comes in close contact with someone with coronavirus for more than fifteen minutes could spread the virus regardless of whether either party wears a mask. Bottom line, there is plenty of evidence by the organizations we've been told to heed in dealing with COVID nineteen that all say that masking does not work. The question is now on the Health Commission to prove that there is some benefit, but no bias-free study has ever found a benefit from wearing a mask or respirator in this application. There are no randomized controlled trials with verified outcomes that show a benefit to healthcare workers or community members for wearing a mask to stop viral transmission. Likewise, no study exists that shows a benefit from a broad policy to wear masks in public. Notably, what some new research shows is that masks could pose serious health risks. In Canada, thirty-one point one million disposable masks that were distributed by the government had to be destroyed because they were determined to put wearers at risk of, quote, "Early pulmonary toxicity, lung damage associated with microscopic graphene particles."
Ms. Henzig, you've got thirty, technically thirty seconds left of your five minutes. If you go over a little bit, that's not the end of the world, but just so you know.
Thank you. A study in the journal Cancer Discovery found that inhalation of harmful microbes that come from long-term use of face masks contributes to advanced-stage lung cancer. And now on to the data which proves masks do nothing to stop the trends in virus transmission. In Florida, a group called Rational Ground analyzed masked versus non-mask counties. Twenty-two of sixty-seven Florida counties implemented mask mandates, and the mandated areas included almost all of the state's largest metro areas. If masks worked, if masks, masks worked, you'd expect to see the maskless counties see bigger spikes in infection, but that did not happen. Mask-mandated counties saw higher rates of cases than non-mandated counties. As you know, Florida is one of twenty states that dropped its mask mandate. In a hearing with Florida Governor Ron DeSantis, Martin Kulldorff, biostatistician and epidemiologist of Harvard Medical School, said, quote, "Masks were not able to prevent a resurgence of the disease during the winter." Another analysis looked at seventeen contiguous Tennessee counties from October first to December twenty-second, where roughly half had mask mandates and half didn't. The infection rates in the masked versus unmasked counties saw an equal increase. Almost every county saw a spike in November, masked or not. These findings that masks don't affect virus spikes jibes with findings reported on Bit Shoot dot com by a man named Ivor Cummins, that's I-V-O-R-C-U-M-M-I-N-S, who has been periodically documenting trends in COVID spikes and showing that despite mandated masks, the same trends are seen virtually everywhere in the world because of how virus transmission behaves generally. There's insufficient time to relate the immensity of his data so you can watch it on Bit Shoot. Just one example of the phenomenon he explains of the rise in virus cases despite mandated masks is the Philippines. This country, that started out last May with eighteen thousand cases and saw cases decline through Christmas without a mask mandate, saw its largest spike in cases in March and April this year, months after its nationwide mask mandate took effect in December. Almost anywhere universal masking has been implemented, from Peru to Colombia to Greece to the United Kingdom, has been followed by significant case spikes. That's because virus is gunna-virus, masks are not. Infection trends follow a distinct pattern, rising during predictable cycles with historical precedent, and that is what Ivor Cummins Bit Shoot presentations will show you. But don't take his word for it, take Google's. If you Google, quote, "Coronavirus cases in Wisconsin," and click "all time," you will see a graph that shows the upward trend in COVID infections occurred during our typical fall and winter flu season, after the statewide mask mandate went into effect. Again, this is similar to trends documented by Ivor Cummins in virtually every nation he analyzed. And to save time, I'll skip some of my remarks, but I will skip down to an important area. We have crossed a dangerous line in that we are subjecting citizens at large to a practice that has never, ever been practiced, treating the population at large as a fatal health risk in the face of a disease which has been proven to have a survival rate ranging from ninety-four point six percent at the low end for those over the age of seventy- 94.6% at the low end for those over the age of 70 and above 99% for everyone else, according to the CDC's own data. According to the MacIver Institute, 80% of COVID deaths in Wisconsin are among those age 70 or older. In all of 2020, 3,625 people out of 6 million in our population died. That's six deaths for every 10,000 people or .06%. This does not even meet the World Health Organization's own longstanding definition of a pandemic, which up until 2009, when the effort switched to selling vaccines, had to include, quote, "enormous numbers of deaths and illnesses." Since Wisconsin is not experiencing a real pandemic, let alone a crisis of excess mortality, the COVID situation, not crisis, in Wisconsin can be managed more effectively by exposing only, by focusing only on the vulnerable age groups instead of still more widespread masking. Finally, if you implement a mask mandate, you only hurt West Alice's economy. People well aware of masks' uselessness will simply go outside the city to dine, gather, and transact businesses, transact their business, rather. The harm that will be incurred will only add to our residents' already fragile financial situation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public comment. On the top of page two, item F, our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on the top of page two. The public may contact the committee chair to discuss, sorry, relative to an agenda item of interest to them. If a member has interest in multiple agenda items which are scheduled for discussion during the readings simultaneously occurring, they should contact the chair of the committee to inform them of such interest. Moving on to item G, I do not have a mayor's report this evening, so we will go right to item H. Are there any alderperson's reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Keen.
It'll be coming out soon, but April 17th, we are, Alderwoman Grisham and I are planning a District Three cleanup from 10 to 12. We're meeting at Reservoir Park. Supplies will be given out, gloves, pickers, garbage bags, and we just hope for good participation. Without being able to have outdoor events, we are going to have raffles, thanks to some donations from DPW, like grand prize of a rain barrel, some gear, some gift cards. So if you can make it, please join us on April 17th, 10:00 a.m. at Reservoir Park. We will be posting it on social media so everyone's aware.
Thank you. Are there any other reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
I move for approval the minutes of the March 16th, 2021 common council meeting.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any changes to the minutes? No changes. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes are approved. Standing committee reports. We have the advisory committee. I will ask the clerk to read out that item.
The advisory committee recommended approval of item number five, the appointment of Levert Baldwin to the West Alice Police and Fire Commission.
Alderperson Ranky, you want to move approval?
I move to approve the committee report.
Thank you. If there is no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderman Grisham.
Aye.
Weigel.
Excused.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one excused.
Okay, motion carries. Before we go on to item K, it is usually our custom, if we want to invite Mr. Baldwin up, to just say a few words to the council on, on his appointment to the Police and Fire Commission.
Boy, there's a lot of new faces here since I was here last, let me tell you that. I want to thank you for taking the opportunity to approve me to the Fire and Police Commission. I know I was back in 1996. I was on it for just one year and I had the unfortunate consideration to run for sheriff and I won, so I couldn't stay on the commission after then. I've been a lifelong resident of West Alice. Many, two of you, three of you probably know me, that we've worked together for many years. My family is, I have my kids born and raised. They went to Nathan Hale High School. My grandkids are going there now. My wife works part-time at Irving School and I'm really proud to be able to be on this commission because I know that we have the best law enforcement and the best firefighters, actually in the whole county, if not in the state. I hope I can add some light to whatever their discussions are and I will do my best. And if any one of you has any questions of me, anytime, give me a call. I'm sure you can find me on the phone, not, not the phone, but on your, on your iPads. I'd be glad to answer any questions if I can. Any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Just flew through nine to nothing, so you're good.
Okey-dokey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You take care.
Now we'll move on to item K.
Mayor Devine.
Consent agenda. Alderman Lysik.
I move for suspension of the rules in order to enable us to act on the consent agenda this evening.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the rules are suspended. Moving, or taking up item K now. I know I have one request for item six to be taken out separately. Is there any other separate action requests? Are there any other separate action requests? Give everybody a moment. Seems like we are good. So then I will first take up the balance of the consent agenda, items seven through 29. Somebody want to make them?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
And I second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. There is no discussion. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Vitale.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one excused.
Motion carries. And now we have before us item six.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Stefanski.
Can I make a motion to refer that to committee at the recess meeting?
I'll second it.
Sure. Any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Tenorio.
I, I sponsored this resolution. This is, for those who don't know, this is a resolution to condemn violence against the Asian-American Pacific Islander community. And the reason why I think this resolution is so important, specifically calling out what's happening to my community, to the Asian-American community, is that, as we've seen in the past year, and as we saw with the shootings in Atlanta against Asian-American women, I think it's really important to call that out. And I've seen concerns about saying, "All hate crimes are bad," which I agree, but I think in this moment, I don't think it's necessary to refer to committee. I think we could vote on this right now, naming what's happening to the Asian-American community, the Asian-American Pacific Islander community, and condemning anti-AAPI violence.
Thank you, Alderman Tenorio.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Tenorio and I certainly understand Alderman Stefanski's point of view and the amendment that he's offering. I think that the appropriate thing for our council to do would be to act and hopefully approve item six as is. And I would call on Alderman Stefanski to bring his resolution condemning all violence against all minorities and factions of society and society as a whole as a separate resolution that can be acted upon at our next council meeting, which I would gladly vote in favor of.
Thank you, Alderman Haas. Alderman Wrote.
Is there a motion on the floor right now?
There was a motion to send it to committee and a second, but I'm not sure which committee you wanted to send it to.
I believe we, we second, so she'll go back to the committee.
But which committee?
License and Health.
I see attorney.
Why would it be License and Health?
And not advisory.
That's a license and health.
So, Mr. Mayor?
City Attorney Decker.
In cases like this, if there's a motion to refer to committee, the person making the motion can select whatever committee they want to refer it to.
Okay.
It's just up to the council to decide if that's the appropriate committee to refer it to.
Okay. So you want to amend your motion or assume it's amended to refer it to License and Health?
Correct.
And is Alderman Vitale, your second, is consistent with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
I just, I'm, I'm having a problem with understanding why this goes to License and Health. This is really clearly an item that would typically be referred to advisory committee and I think that's the proper committee it should go to.
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Grisham.
I believe we have the same committee, regardless if it's advisory or License and Health, same members. I wouldn't mind it going to advisory as well, so it wouldn't matter which committee at this point.
I don't have a problem with me and advisory if that's what you guys want to do.
Now, we don't, we don't have advisory agendas to meet after recess. Attorney Decker.
Based on exception to the public notice rules, you actually can refer an item to a committee without having a prior published agenda because it's a subunit of the council. So this item could be referred to advisory and advisory could meet tonight if that motion is successful.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the motion is to send it to License and Health. If there is no other discussion on that motion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on referring this item six to License and Health.
Alderperson Vitale.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysik.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
No.
Eight in favor, one opposed, and one excused.
Okay, that is then sent on to License and Health. And now we are up to...
Mayor Devine.
Yes, Alderman Lysik.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderperson Ranky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are in recess. Thank you.